If I could have you, everyone, take their seats.
Yes.
Thank you. I now call this regular meeting of the Board of Education to order at 7 o'clock PM. We'll now take a moment of silence followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Just a reminder to Board members, when it's your turn to speak, have your microphone turned on and speak directly into them. I'll have the coordinator at this time call the roll.
Ms. Jackson?
Present.
Mr. Rollins?
Here.
Mr. Scravano?
Here.
Mrs. McCullough?
Here.
Dr. Harner?
Here.
Mr. Connor?
Here.
Mrs. Powers?
Here.
With the Southern present, we have a quorum.
Before we go any further, I'd like to say thank you to Sophia Dunn from Auburn High School Media. She is helping us with our broadcast on Channel 20 tonight. So Sophia, thank you for being here. And I'd also like to recognize Laura Fromm, whose birthday it is today, so... Twenty-nine. Twenty-nine.
Again.
Again. So we will now recognize and celebrate outstanding contributions of our students and staff, and I'll have Earl Dotson Jr. make his presentations.
Good evening and thank you. First, I would like to acknowledge, as many of you of the Board members came down early this evening to meet many of our new teachers, I would like to formally welcome them to our school district and let them know that we are certainly here to serve them and wish them nothing but success. So at this time, would I like to have all of them stand so that they can be recognized? Please stand. And I need to read a quick poem called "The Best Teachers." Teachers open up young minds, showing them the wonders of the intellect and the miracle of being able to think for themselves. A teacher exercises the mental muscles of students, stretching and strengthening so they can make challenging decisions, find their way in the world, and become independent. The best teachers care enough to gently push and prod students to do their best and fulfill their potential. You are one of those. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, I'd like to recognize some outstanding students. Students who participated in this year's summer ACT prep course sponsored by First Rockford Group improved their ACT score by 3.4 points on average. The most improved portion of the exam was science. This is the second year for the summer prep program, open to all RPS juniors, and participation grew from eighty-nine students last year to one hundred and forty students this year. Jefferson High School students are here this evening. Jefferson had the greatest representation and largest growth in the program and will receive a six-foot traveling trophy courtesy of Next Rockford Group.
All right.
Thank you to Sunil Puri and First Rockford Group for sponsoring this program. Thanks also to Dave Carson for organizing the program, and congratulations again to all of our students for their very hard work. Please join me in recognizing them. So with us this evening, of course, we have Don Runde, who is the principal of Jefferson. Hello, Don. Scott Demke is the ACT prep program coordinator. Hello, Scott. We have Anthony Kluzak, who improved his score by six points. Carolina Aguirre, she improved her score by seven points. And Jared Ortega improved his score by nine points. So again, congratulations.
Congratulations. Well done. Wonderful. Wonderful. Great job. What an improvement.
Congratulations. Nice job.
Thank you very much.
Good job.
We wish you continued success.
Thank you, sir. That is all.
All right. You bet. Thank you. We are now at the petitions and communications portion of our meeting, when we invite the public to make comments. The First Amendment of the United States Constitution guarantees the rights of citizens to petition their government, as well as provides for freedom of speech. Also, the Illinois School Code requires that there be a time at regular and special meetings for public comment. Thus, we are following those mandates during these petitions and communications portions of our agenda. According to Board Policy 2.230, the public comments portion of the meeting is limited to a total of thirty minutes. The Board will not respond to comments at this time. If it is appropriate, you will be contacted in a timely manner by staff in response to your questions. In order to allow sufficient time for the business of the Board and conduct our meetings in an efficient and effective manner, we are requesting that you comply with the guidelines that are posted, and each speaker will be allowed no more than two minutes. And we have a clock on the wall to help you with your timing. It's not appropriate to address individual Board members or individual administrators or discuss matters that would otherwise be confidential in such open meetings. Two names will be called at one time, the one whose turn it is to speak and the person who will speak next. When you are the second person, please come to the front, and we thank you for your interest and for your cooperation with our guidelines. Our first speaker tonight is Shanna Spearman, to be followed by Allison Wang. Hit the button on there to turn it on. Okay. There you go.
Good evening. Board members and guests, my name is Shanna Spearman, and I have been a custodian at Reese Middle School for nine years. I am here tonight to speak on behalf of all of Rockford Public School custodians. We are employees, but we are also parents. Our kids go to these schools, and we are citizens. We are part of this community. We are working harder than ever to ensure a clean and healthy environment for students, teachers, and staff. But right now, we are struggling to make ends meet. It's harder to afford childcare and pay our bills. We do not have the benefits that our other schools' employees enjoy, like health insurance, a pension, paid holidays, or even paid sick days. When we are sick, we have to risk spreading illness or sacrifice our pay. This past summer, we had to forfeit our vacation time so we could be ready for the new school year after cleaning up after all of the construction work. Right now, we are in negotiations for a new contract. Our employee, employer, GCA, is telling us that there is no money available for improved wages or benefits, but millions have been spent on school construction and upgrades. We are here to ask you to step up and help us. Something's got to be done now. What's happening is not fair. We need a wage increase to support our families and benefits that will ensure a healthy and fair school community. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you. Allison Wang, to be followed by Reverend Anthony Greer.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. To start, I would like to talk about New York City School District. Not so long ago, this city school district doubled the number of pre-K students from twenty thousand students to fifty-one thousand children, starting a noble campaign to ensure that every four-year-old in New York City has access to quality pre-K education. This project is absolutely massive. We are talking about one thousand new pre-K teachers and over six thousand inspections and site visits to pre-K centers by the Fire Department of New York City, Health Department, Building Department, and the Department of Education to ensure the safety and quality of every single school. And this is all in the name of prioritizing increased educational opportunity for all students. But let's talk about the money now. Would anyone like to guess about how much this project would cost? And keep in mind that this number includes the cost to build facilities, inspect for structural integrity, hire new teachers, and for all the resources to take care of these fifty-one thousand kids. Any guesses now? Three hundred million. This means that three hundred million can cover all fifty-one thousand four-year-olds in New York City. You just sometimes have to admire the efficiency of New York City. If only we were just like this. Thank you for listening.
Thank you. Thank you, Allison. Reverend Greer, to be followed by Colleen McGee.
Good evening. Again, I'm here to talk about the problems that still exist in this district, the behavior towards the African-American staff, administrators, and any other teachers. I've sent emails in concern to this issue, and two of the most common responses I'm receiving is FOIA, and one of its words called "governance," which means exercise of authority, management, and control. Now, I know it's been since nineteen ninety-three, when I graduated from Auburn High School, so I still have common sense, but I do believe that this district has not exhibited, or members of the Board has not exhibited, the two things that you have, that's authority and control. The problem I've seen that is persistent is that we continue to fall and continue to shortchange our children in the things that they need. You have failed as Board members to indicate what is needed and follow through with what's needed, and which shows me that you are in agreement with what's going on in our district, which means that if each one of you feel that the word "governance" is your response to our community concerns, maybe we, as the community, should use our governance power, the authority and control we have, to vote you out when your time is coming up. Also, we ask you that with your governance power and authority that you fix these problems instead of sitting silently and agreeing to all the negative things that's going on and the deceitful practices that's taking place in this district under our fearless leader. Thank you. God bless you and have a good night.
Colleen McGee, to be followed by Kate Schnell.
Okay, this is reading part two, and I decided to bring a visual aid because those work well in the classroom. I wanted to represent the $250 million we're currently spending on construction. I couldn't think of $250 million anything I had the time to count, so I thought I'd go with 250 inches. So basically, every inch of this represents a million dollars we're spending on construction. Now, I am not saying we shouldn't do the construction. The buildings need to be repaired, remodeled, added on to, all those kinds of things because we haven't done it in a long time. We do need to spend the 250 million, but look at how much it is. Every inch of this represents a million dollars we're spending on construction. Now, if we just took 1% as much, 2.5 million, we could hire approximately fifty new teachers. That's at about $50,000 a teacher. Figure starting salaries, what, about thirty-some thousand, maybe forty thousand? Throw in the benefits, we're around fifty. So 1% as much as what we're spending on construction would hire fifty new teachers. You put those fifty teachers at the kindergarten level, and we could reduce kindergarten class size from twenty-eight down into the teens. Think how much better our kids would have, how much better opportunity our kids would have to learn to read with class sizes half of what they are now. 2%, $5 million. We could do the same thing at the first grade level. 3%, $7.5 million. We could do the same thing at the second grade level, and just maybe we'd have a few more kids reading at grade level by third grade, which according to the research is kind of the benchmark age where if you aren't reading at grade level by then, it's going to be a real struggle to get you at grade level later on in your education. So come on. If we can do this for construction, can we do this to help kids learn to read? Thank you.
Thank you. Kate Schnell, to be followed by Deion Baldwin.
God, I love Colleen. She's smart on numbers. I just have kids to refer to. I have this newspaper article from this Sunday. We've all heard this before. "In the classroom, we focus on benchmarks for students' achievement, literacy, numeracy, college and career readiness, attainment, and quotes 'graduation.'" You know, that works for some. We know that works great for some, but for the majority of our traditional students, especially those that require IEPs, you might as well just stop at that first building block, literacy. I was just listening to the kids that boosted their scores, ACT scores, especially in science. That's exactly what my godson said. I mean, he did biology, chemistry, and physics. He said, "Kate, the science part is easy. I can do those graphs. I just read so slowly. I can't finish the test." And I'm like, "Phil, when did you..." I take the blame. I wasn't there for him for, I mean, and I was around, but I should have been reading with this kid, and I wasn't. And I said, "When did you quit reading?" "Well, in the second grade." He told me second grade because that's when, first grade, Ms. Matthews, oh, she was a wonderful teacher at Haskell. Second grade, well, then we had, we do silent reading. The teacher would take us up there for a few minutes, a few students, and then we were supposed to go sit down. We had to start reading paragraphs. They were so boring. So I pretended I was reading, I wasn't reading, and then, of course, it was better, you know, he talked to his friends and stuff like that. So he became a behavioral issue, but everybody thought, "The kid's smart, he's great in math, he just is a behavioral problem." No, he couldn't read. And that's why I say, this whole realization that came to me with the ACT scores...
Thank you, Kate.
Two kids...
I'm sorry, your time's up.
...in our school district got football scholarships.
Thank you, Kate.
Only two. You're welcome.
Deion Baldwin.
Good evening. I first like to start off by saying, last week's six-to-one vote to approve a bid by Eeler and Associates to analyze the district's security systems, that was $126,000 higher than the second bid, was financially reckless, erroneous, and a slap in the face of taxpayers. I think shame on you, because neither one of you, I believe with all of my heart, would never handle your personal finances as such, and I think that there is sure to be a deficit in the near future of this district with the way that you are spending. Secondly, PPEE has requested on numerous occasions that the academic data be made accessible via the district's website. Still not happening, as of my latest glance at the website, but currently, according to state stats, only 64% of RPS students graduate among a four-year cohort, and only 68% are graduating among a five-year cohort. Now, we know that's not accurate because that's not counting in our students that are displaced, that are put in other programs, that drop out, that are expelled. So we're probably at a 50% or lower graduation rate of all of our kids. And in even better news, an NBC News article was released on September 18, 2014, titled, "Rockford Among Least Educated Cities in America." Rockford was one of the 150 cities identified by Wallet Hub as one of the, not 150, but 148 out of 150, least educated cities. Is that what you want your legacy to be? Is that what you want your contribution to this city to be? I should hope not. Not only for my child, not only for someone else's child, but for the sake of this city, prioritize appropriately. Schools are not more important than students.
Thank you, Deion. Your time's up, sorry.
Vote no to the referendum.
Okay. Next portion of our agenda is Board member comments. Are there any Board member comments at this time? Mrs. Powers?
I just wanted to explain the rationale for one of my votes later on tonight, that I will not be supporting the HR addendum. Specifically, there are differentials from our athletic department for positions that don't have job descriptions, and I just can't support that practice. I've made administration aware of my concerns through the formal processes, and I just can't support what is in just this addendum, over $36,000.
The other Board, Dr. Harner?
Just two quick comments. I just wanted to say that I had an opportunity to attend the expo, and it was really a great event. It was very interesting, sitting and listening to the presentations that the kids were listening to. They seemed very engaged, it seemed well organized. And the other thing I wanted to mention is, one of the things that we passed along the way in the past year was the Youth Court Initiative, and I had a chance to go out to Jefferson a couple weeks ago and attend one of the Youth Court sessions, and it was an incredible little experience. I mean, they had three, three of the kids and their parents came to talk with the other students on the jury. It was very respectful, very insightful, very good, serious questions, very serious deliberation, and I think it'll be a real, I think that it will have a very positive impact on those kids who are able to take advantage of this program. Thanks.
Thank you. Any other comments at this time? Seeing none, I'd like to, if there are no objections, I'd like to reorder the agenda to consider our action item, the Intergovernmental Agreement with the City of Rockford Regarding 201 South Madison Street Location. If we do, we can then consider the bid recommendation, IFB 1502, for the old administration building demolition and the former building's asbestos abatement. Is, Mr. Smith, is there anything you wanted to throw in here? I have your name listed here. Is there any comments you wanted to make? Okay. So all the information in your packet. So is there a motion and a second to approve the Intergovernment Agency Agreement with the City of Rockford?
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Connor?
Second.
Seconded by Dr. Harner. Any discussion or questions? And I'll have the coordinator then call the roll on the approval of the Intergovernmental Agency Agreement with the City of Rockford. Oh, I'm sorry, Jude. Mrs. McCullough?
I know that this question had come up with the administration regarding the site, so when we vote on this, I just want clarification that our responsibility will be solely for the demolition of this building and not for any preparation of the site for any other use.
Correct. Demolition is for the demolition and the abatement, asbestos abatement of this with the base bid that you have at $427,000.
Okay. Any other questions or discussion? The coordinator then call the roll. Ms. Jackson, did you have a question? Or comment?
I do. So these bids are both that we're going to be looking at for the old administration building, correct?
Yes.
Okay. So with the Intergovernmental Agreement, it's around 700 and, what is it, 725,000?
It was initially out there when we presented an estimate of 725,000, but the Board wanted us to go back out there and actually get the bids for this, so we have got the bids. And with the actuals for the abatement, the demolition, and an allowance for utility disconnect, it's going to be 606,185, and we still have a 10% contingency on there of 60,619 for 666,804. And based off of that, 606,804, there's 20,000 in there. That's just an allowance for the utility disconnects, and then 60,000 is the 10% contingency that we may or may not be needing for the demolition.
So did it change the terms of the agreement? Because we were bartering. I mean, they were giving us salt for this, trees for this, and that amount was, they were both, so how does that change the IGA?
It sits there as, it's on the aggregate. It's a dollar for dollar. So we had it up there at 725,000. If the cost for us to demo the building comes in at $645,000, then we'll get in-kind services from the city at $645,000. And we have it set up there where every year we'll sit there and reconcile it. Mr. Lewis and the Finance Department will work with the city's finance and reconcile that to make sure it's dollar for dollar.
Okay, and it's over five years, so we can see the benefits. Well, because this building will go down November 1st, I believe?
Oh, I potentially out that.
Is that what it is?
Yes.
Okay, so we have a five-year IGA?
Yes.
With the city?
Not to exceed five years.
Not to exceed five years.
Yep, and that's how we looked at it, but with some of the numbers, as we get there with some of the things we're looking at for salt for the first year, the salt has went up and doubled. So once we get the six...
Okay, and it's over five years, so we can see the benefits, well, because this building will go down November 1st, I believe?
Oh, I potentially out that, yes.
Okay, so we have a five-year IGA?
Yes.
With the city?
Not to exceed five years.
Not to exceed five years?
Yep, and that's how we looked at it, but with some of the numbers, as we get there with some of the things we're looking at for salt for the first year, the salt has went up and doubled. So, once we get the 600, it may take two and a half years for us to get the like-for-like comparisons of the value for the demolition, and then at that time, once finance says, yes, we have recouped everything, then we would be done with the IGA for this specific purpose.
What happens if we don't? Let's say it's not to exceed five years, and we've not recouped, dollar for dollar, then what?
We have it set up, we're pretty confident we will, as we look at it from the abatements of the property with the sidewalks that they put in, and the salt that we're going to get, we think that we should, no problem within five years to make sure we recoup all that, and odds are, we'll probably do it in less time than that.
And the trees that they're planting, are they on district property, all of those trees?
It will be district property that we will, I ask, we'll be planting them at a lot of our new construction sites, where we've tore down a lot of trees, where we've identified areas, and working with our landscape architect to replace the trees that we've tore down for the construction work. And plus, we also have the project where we're looking at getting rid of the ash trees, which we have several hundred of those in the district.
I'm going to restate something I said when we started with this IGA, and that is, I think part of the city's job is to provide safe egress on our walkways, and to put in sidewalks, and part of this IGA, is it 65,000? I'm not sure, I'm not looking at the number, is to put sidewalks around Floberg School, which is, so that students can walk to and from the school. I understand that we've paid for sidewalks, for example, in front of Eisenhower, and that there are other places in this construction that we have coming up that we will be paying for sidewalks. But years ago, when I first sat on this board, the city talked about the fact that they were going to be putting sidewalks in, specifically at Floberg, and now we're going to actually pay for those via this agreement. So, I'm going to support it, because I do think that we need to, I think it's in the best interest of this community, but I think it's important that we're all working together, and so, I am supporting it, but sometimes there are things that, and in this instance, it's the sidewalks that's really bothering me, that seems to be the job and the responsibility of the city, and yet, they're coming under our plate. So, I just wanted to reiterate what I had said previously on this, but I do appreciate the fact that we have actual numbers to go on now as we put forward our vote.
Ms. Jackson?
No.
Mr. Rollins?
Yes.
Mr. Scravano?
Yes.
Mrs. McCullough?
Yes.
Dr. Harner?
Yes.
Mr. Connor?
Yes.
Mrs. Powers?
No.
The motion passes with five yeses and two nos.
Thank you. We are now at the consent portion of our agenda, including the following consent items, the meeting minutes of September 9, 2014, payroll, accounts payable, purchase orders, contracts under 10,000, travel, and the following two bid recommendations, IFB 1502, the old administration building demolition, and IFB 1505, the former administration building asbestos abatement, recurring contracts, including special education private and residential placement at Indian Oaks, special education private and residence placement contract at Arrowhead Ranch, other consent items, including the Winnebago County Health Department for dental examines and sealants, annual application for recognition by the Illinois State Board of Education, the Village of Cherry Valley in-kind contribution facility fee, and the Freedom of Information Act log. Is there a motion and a second to approve the consent items?
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Connor?
Second.
That one got pulled, D got pulled. 10D was pulled. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Dr. Harner. Are there any consent items that board members wish to have pulled for separate consideration? Mr. Rollins?
10C.
10C? Mr. Connor?
9C.
9C? There isn't a 9C. Oh, I don't have that on my script. Is that one still on there?
It's on the agenda.
Okay, all right. Okay, running start, okay. So 9C. Any others, is that anyone? Ms. Jackson?
7E.
7E.
8A B.
Okay.
10A.
Okay, I'll have the coordinator then call the role on the approval of the consent items not pulled.
Mr. Rollins?
Yes.
Mr. Scravano?
Yes.
Mrs. McCullough?
Yes.
Dr. Harner?
Yes.
Mr. Connor?
Yes.
Mrs. Powers?
Yes.
Ms. Jackson?
Yes.
The motion passes unanimously.
Okay, and I'll take a motion for the approval of 7E contracts under 10,000.
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Connor? Is there a second? Second by Dr. Harner?
Second.
Discussion or questions on 7E? Ms. Jackson?
So I do have a couple of questions, and I told administration that I was going to be pulling the contracts. So, my questions are around the middle school philosophy. It looks like we've paid about $18,000 for this. Are these, we've had contracts with these individuals before, correct? So this is something in addition to?
Good evening. No, this is payment for the work that we had already, we had approved their contracts, and they just wrapped up in August with their last presentation, so they submitted payment.
Okay, so this is nothing new?
No.
Were there any, I guess, district staff that worked on developing this philosophy?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, we had district staff, we had parents, students. Currently, we have five task forces with about 48 staff members that are currently working on it, and they also had input on the philosophy.
So then I have another question. Looks like they also, a part of this was the research that they did. It looks like we were paying some for research to gather information to create a middle school philosophy, and I don't recall the name of it, but we paid for something that gave us access to where this company would do research for us. Why did we go, why did we go this route with them instead of?
So, the research was the study of our staff, and so that term is used, but it wasn't to research best practices, to research what our staff's interests are, what parent input is, what our student input is, and then to have that manifest in the form of the philosophy. So, it wasn't research on best practice.
So we're done with them? We won't see any more contracts?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome, thank you. Ms. McCullough?
Just, I'm sorry, just, so I understand, because usually if we have a contract with somebody, the PO is just coming in under our PO, why do, why are these coming in in the under 10,000? I don't understand.
I'm going to defer to finance on that.
I mean, if these are part of that larger contract that we approved, why would these come in on an under 10?
I want to make sure I fully appreciate your question. So, these are contracts under 10,000, we're, we, the administration has the authority to pay, and to let for contracts under 10,000, so these are just coming forward.
So we as a board, didn't approve a contract for all the work on the middle school? Had that conversation here. We had a larger contract, was that for different work?
We had two different scopes of contract with them in two fiscal years. There was work that we did in the spring, and actually conducting the assessment, and engaging in the task force. Then we had the work done in this fiscal year that represented the report, and working with our, with our board and presenting to you. So, there were two different scopes under two different fiscal years.
So the other contract was for the previous fiscal year? Because they'd already done work before we even passed the contract, I remember that.
They had, and we have strict requirements on the information they needed to provide to us, and they didn't meet that in the last fiscal year, and they just handed in their information now and said, we'd like to get paid for the work that we did all last year. And so it just happened to be at this board meeting that we're seeing all that.
So, this is for work from last year's, only because it's being presented to, the money isn't part of that contract that we passed for last year? Why, why would it be different? Maybe another board member understands, or Dr. Jared or something, because I don't know that I'm articulating my question very well.
The way I under-
I was going to say, the board champions have been involved with this conversation with Mr. Hickman as well.
That's a good, thank you.
So the way I understood it, is that we hired Jack Barshinger, plus some others, all under individual contracts, under $10,000. Each of those were around the $5,000 mark, for them to do the baseline middle school survey and all of those things. This work, which is writing the middle school philosophy, was a different scope of work, therefore, a different contract. So, whether it was in the same fiscal year or not, you know, this was additional work, different scope of, of what we wanted them to do. So, Jack, in essence, has been paid the 6,000-plus this amount in total for middle school.
Ms. Jackson?
I thought you said it was a continuation of what they did, and actually, I understood Mrs. McCullough's question perfectly. So this was not a continuation of the initial contract? This is something that's in addition to what we paid them? Because they were paid about, was it six? I think they were like, right up at the limit, weren't they, for the ones that we paid?
No, not in, not in the individuals, we didn't approach that limit. Total, Jack Barshinger has not been paid over $10,000. He's had two scopes of work that are related. We had the piece where they did the middle school assessment, and after the assessment, we came back and working with the board champions, we said, we actually want you to do the facilitation work of the task forces and the parent meetings. And so they came back, and when we look at the scope of their services, and I've reviewed this with our board champions, their work to the district was well beyond the scope of the contract. I'm saying, as I think in the original scope, Jack was supposed to be here, Dr. Barshinger was supposed to be here six times, and I think, when I looked at his last log, 17 meetings with the district, and so, we really received a great deal of value for the money spent.
Okay, so this isn't a PO, this is actually a contract, right? Correct, that's my understanding.
Right, it's a contract under 10,000.
Ms. McCullough?
So, and I thank you for the clarification, especially Ms. Powers' clarification, and I'll tell you where my question concern slash concern is, is if we're doing a contract, and it's a different scope of work, and I totally support, I very much respect these jobs, you know, the work that they've done, but when we had the first contract, all these people were paid out under that contract, right? And now, instead of a single contract paying out that amount, we have a separate contract with all the people that are working with the consortium, plus there's another 1,500 or something to the consortium. So my question would have been, why didn't we just do another contract with them, instead of the, for the 18? Don't they all work for the same group?
No.
That's my-
They're independent contractors.
All of them are. Thank you.
Yes.
Thank you, thank you.
Okay, I'll have the coordinator then call the role on the approval of contracts under 10,000.
Mr. Scravano?
Yes.
Mrs. McCullough?
Yes.
Dr. Harner?
Yes.
Mr. Connor?
Yes.
Mrs. Powers?
Yes.
Ms. Jackson?
No.
Mr. Rollins?
Yes.
The motion passes with six yeses and one no.
Ms. Jackson, I just wanted to ask you if I can do 8A and B together? Thank you. And I'll take a motion for the approval of bid recommendations under 8A and B, the demolition and asbestos abatement.
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Rollins?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Connor. Discussion and questions for 8A and B. Seeing none, we'll have the coordinator then call the role on the approval of the IFBs for the old administration building demolition and asbestos abatement.
Mrs. McCullough?
Yes.
Dr. Harner?
Yes.
Mr. Connor?
Yes.
Mrs. Powers?
Yes.
Ms. Jackson?
No.
Mr. Rollins?
Yes.
Mrs. McCullough?
Yes.
Dr. Harner?
Yes.
Mr. Connor?
Yes.
Mrs. Powers?
Yes.
Ms. Jackson?
No.
Mr. Rollins?
Yes.
The motion passes with six yeses and one no.
Okay, next we'll do 9C, which is the Rock Valley Running Start Program, and take a motion to approve that.
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Connor, seconded by Mr. Rollins. Questions and discussions on 9C, Mr. Connor?
I pulled Running Start because I, I think it's an important topic, there's a number of related programs, Advance Now, and I think there are some others that are potential, and I think I'd like the administration to at least address as an overall topic related to Running Start, more or less the purpose of that program, and where we're heading in terms of a direction for programs in concert with Rock Valley.
I can address that, Mr. Connor. The Running Start Program, this will be our third year, there's an engineering Running Start component, as well as another aspect of it that has more of a liberal arts focus. Currently, 15 juniors and 15 seniors take part of that program, but it really fits into a larger partnership with Rock Valley College, that we're continuing to work with the college to develop, including the Advance Now program, which provides students with opportunities to earn college credit or career certification in technical areas. A recent high-profile example will be trying to develop access to the recently approved MOU, that provides opportunities for aviation mechanic work and other areas. So, we're really trying to develop a comprehensive partnership with Rock Valley College that meets the needs of students in many different areas. We are also trying to strike the balance of making sure we do that in a context where we provide great programs with our teachers in our building, so that's why we've limited the scope of some of the programs, like Running Start, and cap the number of students that are available.
Do you have a sense of when the overall planning might be delivered to the board, so we can consider the entirety?
We will continue to bring things forward as they're, as they're developed. We recently had a meeting, Mr. Vosberg and I, and Mr. Carson attended a meeting with Rock Valley College, and there are ongoing conversations about what the overall partnership should continue to look like, and as additional opportunities present themselves, we will provide that. I also believe that the strategic planning process that we're about to undergo is the best way to fold that into an overall strategy, as I feel is the case with just about any new initiatives.
Mrs. Powers?
How many juniors and seniors did you say, again?
We've capped that at 15 juniors and 15 seniors.
And we're in the third year of the program, so is it safe to say that there were 15 who have already graduated? I mean, is it rolling like that? I mean-
Yes, Mr. Carson could provide the specific data on that, we track that.
So the same 15 that are seniors were the 15 juniors last year, or it changes?
There would be the possibility of, if a slot became available, that someone could step in, if there was some attrition, but again, Mr. Carson could speak to the specifics.
From the, thank you for this opportunity, for the first cohort, we had 10 students graduate out of 13 who enrolled, that successfully completed the program.
Thank you.
Ms. McCullough?
Just real quickly, can you speak to the selection of students for the program, and if there is, are we looking at numbers across schools, and how that's, I mean, do we have a whole bunch of students from one school or another, of our high schools, that have applied, or have, do we have spots per school, or are we looking district-wide and doing our rubric based on that?
So we did look district-wide, and we used the assessment data, as well as information about student readiness to align with the requirements in order to be a part of the program. Looking at the roster of the kids who completed, we had spread between all of the campuses, and for those coming up in the current program. I apologize, I should have tabulated this ahead of time. If you'd like, I could get you that information about the distribution.
The apology should be mine, I didn't ask ahead of time. I ask in part, it's interesting, because I had a parent from another district today bemoaning the fact that their school, their district did not have Running Start, and that it was a real, that it was attractive, and when they talked about being in the area, I just wanted to be able to-
If you'd like, I could get you that information about the distribution.
The apology should be mine. I didn't ask ahead of time. I ask in part, it's interesting, because I had a parent from another district today bemoaning the fact that their school, their district, did not have Running Start and that it was a real, that it was attractive. And when they talked about being in the area, I just wanted to be able to confirm that, you know, students have equal opportunity, no matter where they live in the district, to participate. So, thank you.
Ms. Jackson?
Okay. I just want to be clear. So, each school year, 30 students can go, correct? 15 juniors, 15 seniors?
Correct.
And that's in addition to the students already in the program?
So, it'd be 15 additional students each year. So, 15 juniors enter the program on top of the 15-
Oh, okay, on top of-
Move up to be seniors. So, 30 total enrollment.
And so, those juniors become seniors?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. What is the budget source? There are a bunch of numbers. I don't know what that means, do you?
That's the College and Career Rising Department budget.
Oh, okay. And could you send me the demographics on the students that enroll in the program that have went through, please? Thank you. How's it advertised? How do we put it out there for parents and students?
There's information that's broadcast both from our Rock Valley College. You can go to their webpage. They have information available, and then also through our own counseling department. There are letters that are sent home. And again, there are eligibility requirements which students have to meet in order to be able to enroll in the course.
But it's district-wide, so this letter goes out to all eligible juniors, correct? Because that's what it is. You have to at least be a junior?
Well, sophomores to be juniors, correct.
Sophomores, okay. Thank you.
Thanks. I'll have the coordinator then call the role on the approval of the Rock Valley Running Start program.
Dr.?
Agreement. Agreement, not program. Agreement.
Dr. Harner?
Yes.
Mr. Connor?
Yes.
Mrs. Powers?
Yes.
Ms. Jackson?
Yes.
Mr. Rollins?
Yes.
Mr. Scirvano?
Yes.
Mrs. McCulloch?
Yes.
The motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. And I'll take a motion for the approval of Item 10A, which is the IGA with the Winnebago County Health Department for dental exams and sealants.
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Connor?
Second.
Second by Mr. Rollins. Any questions or discussion? Ms. Jackson?
My question is, how does this align with the, is it the school-based health clinic that we're having over at Auburn? How does this align with, compare, contrast, support?
We already have three providers that offer the dental services within the schools. And so, this would just be a means for them to receive reimbursement for the services that they provide for the kids that are either uninsured or that are not Medicaid. So, it would be two separate entities.
It's two separate entities?
Well, it wouldn't have any effect on the students that would come into the school health center.
Okay.
This would be services that would be provided within the school setting. Like in the, we set up a screening exam area within the school building, within each of the school buildings. So, this would be for these children.
Okay. And this population are students that are eligible for free and reduced lunch and the other dental services are for everyone, regardless of your socioeconomic status? Is that what the difference is?
The dentists will see all children, regardless of ability to pay. But they would seek reimbursement through this grant for those children that are uninsured or not Medicaid-eligible.
How does that work then? I guess I'm not understanding. Aren't these all separate providers? So, how, if I see one dentist in that school-based health clinic, can they seek reimbursement through this grant? How does that work?
The grant is for $32,900. And once again, it would be for those children who are either uninsured or not Medicaid-eligible. So, if they're Medicaid-eligible, then those providers would seek reimbursement through Medicaid. Not sure, maybe I'm not understanding your question.
I don't think so. But thank you.
I'm sorry.
Okay. Seeing no other questions, I'll have the coordinator call the role on the approval of Item 10A, the IGA with Winnebago County Health Department.
Mr. Connor?
Yes.
Mrs. Powers?
Yes.
Ms. Jackson?
Yes.
Mr. Rollins?
Yes.
Mr. Scirvano?
Yes.
Mrs. McCulloch?
Yes.
Dr. Harner?
Yes.
The motion passes unanimously.
I'll now take a motion and a second for the Item 10C, which is the Village of Cherry Valley In-Kind Contribution Facility Fee.
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Connor?
Second.
Second by Dr. Harner. Questions or discussion? Mr. Rollins?
I guess the discussion point is that we, not that long ago, adopted a facility-use policy, which originated in the Operations Committee and went through this board. And the discussion, sort of the philosophy that we agreed to was that we, well, we wanted our buildings to be available for people to use. We wanted to be good community partners. We also wanted to cover the cost of using those buildings. And that's not really a controversial topic out there. Most institutions in this community do the same thing. And so, we adopted a policy that would set reimbursement rates for the use of our facilities. We're not trying to make money. We grouped people into categories. We've got a category for governmental and nonprofit organizations. We simply asked to cover our cost. And we did allow the administration to offset the costs incurred by the district with in-kind donations from the user. It's not really, we've been referring to it as a waiver. We actually say waivers are not permitted. What we're supposed to be able to show is that we're offsetting the costs incurred by the district with an in-kind donation from the user. This is not a lot of money. I understand it's not a lot of money. But part of the problem is, I'm a little bit surprised at the volume that we're starting to see, just a couple of school board meetings into the school year, of these sorts of requests. When I look at this particular request, the in-kind donation that we're getting is the police officer, the Cherry Valley Police Officer is coming to present the dare program, which I'm thinking is part of what the Cherry Valley Police Department does. I think that they come in and they do dare programs as part of their community policing. When we talked about the notion of getting something that would offset costs, and the example that I remember being used with me is, there's a church that's close to one of our schools. They let us use one of their parking lots and don't charge us rent. So, it would be nice if we'd be able to let them use some of our, one of our school buildings and equally not charge them rent. So, we save money by not having to pay them rent. They save money by not having to pay us rent. We both save money. And I guess I just don't think that this falls within the spirit of what I thought I was approving when I voted for the policy. We're starting to see more and more of these, and I just don't think we're going down the right path here.
Any other questions or comment? Mr. Connor?
Well, the one comment is, I believe, and I'm looking at their letter, it's both in-kind in terms of the officer and there are supplies. This program is well-liked out in Cherry Valley and is, I know from hearing a lot from community members, is very valued. So, I don't know if I can second-guess the amount. I hear what Mr. Rollins is saying on this. My view is that this is a call of the community out there, and it seems like this is valuable. I guess the one thing I'll say is that, and I too remember that same example about the church parking lot. I think one of the goals, at least, when I voted for it, it was to reach out to the community and do things that was of value to that community, that neighborhood. And so, what I would say is, anything we can do, just my view, to encourage community involvement, I think is a good thing. So, I don't think there's a lot of, you know, wear and tear for this particular event. So, I think the good relations with the community, and it is a very small dollar amount. So, I have to say, I think, from my point of view, one of the things I thought was that involving the community is a reason for us to do these kinds of in-kind. And we just did the one with the Neighborhood Association here that used our parking lot, which was a lot more volume and a lot more dollar amount, so.
Any other questions, comments? And I'll have the coordinator call the role on the approval of the Village of Cherry Valley In-Kind Contribution Facility Fee.
Mrs. Powers?
No.
Ms. Jackson?
No.
Mr. Rollins?
No.
Mr. Scirvano?
No.
Mrs. McCulloch?
No.
Dr. Harner?
No.
Mr. Connor?
Yes.
The motion fails, six nos and one yes.
Thank you. We are now at the closed session consent agenda items, including the appointment of Linda Volkz as the 12-month Speech and Language Assistant Principal, the HR organizational report and addendum, the closed session consent items for student discipline in which expelled or suspended students are prohibited from being on school grounds and school-sponsored activities without the prior written permission of the principal. Student VJK4 is expelled for the remainder of the 2014-15 school year. And the following students have been granted a conditional probationary agreement. That's ACB1, SGC2, and DLH5. Is there a motion in a second to approve the consent, closed session consent items?
So moved.
Mr. Connor?
Second.
Second by Dr. Harner. Are there any items that board members like to have pulled for separate consideration? Mrs. Powers?
11B.
Okay. Ms. Jackson?
12, 13, and we can take those together.
12 and 13 together, okay? So, I'll have the coordinator then call the role on the approval of the items not, closed session items, consent items not pulled.
Yes.
Mr. Rollins?
Yes.
Mr. Scirvano?
Yes.
Mrs. McCulloch?
Yes.
Dr. Harner?
Yes.
Mr. Connor?
Yes.
Mrs. Powers?
Yes.
The motion passes unanimously.
I'll now take a motion in a second for the approval of Item 11B, the HR organizational report and addendum.
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Rollins?
Second.
Second by Mr. Connor. Any questions or discussion? Closed session, we don't do that, right? Yeah? Okay. Yep, okay. So, I'll have the coordinator then call the role on the motion for 11B. Sorry, couldn't remember.
Mr. Rollins?
Yes.
Mr. Scirvano?
Yes.
Mrs. McCulloch?
Yes.
Dr. Harner?
Yes.
Mr. Connor?
Yes.
Mrs. Powers?
No.
Ms. Jackson?
This is the HR report. No.
The motion passes with five yeses and two nos.
Thank you. I'll now take a motion in a second to approve the student discipline items 12 and 13 combined.
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Connor?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Powers. I'll have the coordinator call the role on the approval of Items 12 and 13 together.
Yes.
Mrs. McCulloch?
Yes.
Dr. Harner?
Yes.
Mr. Connor?
Yes.
Mrs. Powers?
Yes.
Ms. Jackson?
No.
Mr. Rollins?
Yes.
The motion passes with six yeses and one no.
We have one additional closed session item that we skipped, and that was the settlement agreement and that we discussed in closed session. So, I'd like to motion in a second to approve that settlement agreement.
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Connor?
Second.
Second.
By Dr. Harner. I'll have the coordinator call the role on the approval of that settlement agreement.
Yes.
Dr. Harner?
Yes.
Mr. Connor?
Yes.
Mrs. Powers? Ms. Jackson?
No.
Mr. Rollins?
Yes.
Mr. Scirvano?
Yes.
The motion passes with six yeses and one no.
Thank you for catching that. Dr. Jarrett, you may now give the superintendent report.
Thank you, I appreciate it. Few items that I'd like to highlight. First of all, again, we'd like to congratulate the students on their growth in the ACT program. The Academy Expo was, again, wildly successful with 700 community volunteers. I think there were some significant improvements. I know a number of concerns last year, although the event was very well-received, concerns about student interactivity and the crowded and how crowded the event was and how noisy it was. It was really, really well-done this year in terms of letting students do a deep dive and interact in much greater detail. They had more time in each section, and I think those organizational instructional improvements made a good event, even better. And I am excited to see how they'll continue to improve things moving forward. A few other items that I wanted to highlight. We are, a board invitation is going to be coming for Rockford Area Economic Development Council, Ford Motor Company. We're going to be recognized as, for our work with high school academies on the 21st of October. Love to invite the board to be present for that event. I'm also going to be spending a lot of time talking about Senate Bill 16 moving forward, which is a very significant funding opportunity that Mr. Lewis and I, a number of, we're going to be working with legislators, community members, and our board, I hope, persuade or at least inform the community to take an advocacy position regarding this potential funding position. And finally, I wanted to share that Dawn Granath and I are going to be at Froberg coming up at the end of the month here on September 30th, because Froberg had an outstanding United Way campaign, and they won a contest. And so, Dawn and I are going to be rolling up our sleeves and working with students that morning, and we're really looking forward to it. And we're, our challenge is hopefully to come up with additional ways to incentivize participation. We're excited to support Froberg for all their hard work with that, with those efforts. So, with that, I'll see the, end my comments and bring it back to you, Mr. Scirvano.
Thank you, sure. Great job. Committee reports. Mrs. McCulloch, Education Committee.
Education Committee has not met since the previous board meeting. We will also not meet in the month of October. One of the reports that we're looking forward to hearing is on the academic achievement for the previous school year, however those scores have been embargoed through October 31st. So, our next meeting is scheduled for Monday, November 3rd, in this room at 5:30. That ends my report.
Mr. Rollins, the Operations Committee report?
I have a similarly short report. We have not met, and we're in this room on Tuesday, October 7th at 5:30 PM.
Very good. Action Item 16, we've already taken care of, so we will move on to new and other business. And the administration has asked the board to suspend the rules to consider this item, the Rockford Public School District Understanding with the State of Illinois for the Federal Preschool Development Grant. Ms. Nelson, I think you're presenting this, aren't you? Do we want to, we need a motion then to suspend the rules?
So moved.
Moved and seconded. All those in favor? Or we'll have the coordinator call the role on the suspension of the rules.
Dr. Harner?
Yes.
Mr. Connor? Mr. Connor?
Yes.
Mrs. Powers?
Yes.
Ms. Jackson? Mr. Scovano?
Yes.
Mrs. McCulloch?
Yes.
Dr. Roll, or Mr. Rollins?
Yes.
The motion passes with six yeses and one absence from the vote.
You can call him Attorney Rollins, you can call him whatever. Call him Tim, you know, whatever.
It's an actual rule, it says we can't be called doctor even though we have a jurist doctor.
Okay. Is that right? Okay. I think next, we need a motion to approve this memorandum of understanding. In a second?
Second.
And now we will have the presentation.
Okay. Well, good evening, and I really appreciate you guys working with us with this very aggressive timeline that the State of Illinois has set forth. I do want to give you some background on this exciting opportunity for us to partner with the State of Illinois on the preschool development and expansion grant opportunity. Mid-June, Teresa Hawley, who's the Executive Director of the Governor's Office of Early Childhood Development, contacted local early childhood leaders in the Rockford community. She wanted to meet with us to kind of give us a heads-up on two federal opportunities that would be released sometime this fall. The first one was a federal application for early child, or early Head Start and childcare partnerships. The focus of that grant was to improve quality for children in childcare facilities under the age of three. The second federal opportunity was this preschool development expansion grant, which was designed to enhance and expand early childhood services specifically for four-year-old students. The Governor's Office was looking for communities in advance that might be able to meet some of the minimum requirements, and the Rockford community met those. The things that they were looking for was a high-quality early childhood program who had been acknowledged through the Accelerate Rating Program, in other words, a gold-level program. They were looking for communities that already had established relationships with community partners in the area, which we have very longstanding relationships with our community partners, as well as a community that has already demonstrated a very viable pipeline for early childhood comprehensive services from prenatal through third grade. So what they were looking for in that is communities that had high-quality evidence-based home visiting programs, programs that provided services to children with disabilities under the age of three, programs that, or communities that could demonstrate good transition processes moving from the birth to three to the three-to-five program, and then again transitioning into kindergarten. So we met all those initial requirements that the Governor's Office knew we needed to meet, and at that time, they had only identified five communities in the State of Illinois that they were willing to partner with. So at that time, we started putting on our thinking caps, not having all the information that we needed, and started to look at, how would we do this? What would four-day programming, full-day programming look like? On July 15th, we gave, we were given a little more information from the Governor's Office. They sent out a very detailed letter of interest that communities had to complete and get back to them. It had to be a community look at the funding streams and the programming that was currently available. One lead agency from each community was selected to present that information, and the Rockford Public Schools was that agency. This grant can only be applied for by the governors of the different states. It is going to be fiscally managed by the Illinois State Board of Education, and it will be coordinated by the Office of Early Childhood and Development out of the Governor's Office. So one of the things that we put in our letter of interest was where and how many slots we would be looking at. Now, we did have the opportunity to take a look at doing all new slots, but in looking at our current system and where our children were at, since we have expanded our preschool program, we have not had a consistent waiting list, and so the decision was made to look at the possibility of converting some locally funded seats into the preschool development grant, which would alleviate the impact early childhood is having on Fund 10. So some of these seats are conversion seats, and some of these seats are new seats. We're currently looking at converting two classrooms at Dennis Early Childhood Center, and this would be a collaboration with Head Start. One of the main requirements of this grant is that we leverage the current funding within the community by looking at Head Start funding, childcare assistance funding, our preschool-for-all funding, and then intertwining that with the preschool development grant. So over at Dennis, we're looking at 40 full-day slots for there. Sommerdale School is another site where we are converting two classrooms to full-day four-year-old only. And then we had an opportunity to expand our partnership with Circles of Learning at Harrison Park. They are currently in the process of adding a four-classroom addition to their facility, and they had an identified waiting list of children who were not enrolled in services. And these families are not necessarily families that are going to come to Rockford Public Schools because they need full-day programming. And that's exactly what this federal preschool grant is for, is to help provide those wraparound services, full-day programming for children, as well as increase mental health, support, health, and access to community resources through working with the families. The federal grant was released on August 13th with a due date of October 14th. Since that application release, the State of Illinois has had a pretty aggressive timeline in gathering additional information along the way, and as communities presented their information, we were invited to the next process of this grant. We were notified today that they expect to send us our final MOU. What you have in front of you is a draft. There are blanks in their Exhibit 1, which is where they would put the funding amount and the number of seats and classrooms. That is still currently under review by the State of Illinois, Governor's Office, as well as ISB, and those final determinations will be made, and we'll get that information on the 29th. We did not receive the draft MOU or our budget worksheets until the 11th of September, and they were due back on the 17th. So at this point in time, we're still waiting to see if what we wrote for is what we're going to get, and the other thing I need to let you know is that this is a pretty competitive grant. State of Illinois is up against 35 other states that already have high-quality programming, and we are included in the states that had the Race to the Top money. The nice thing is, unlike the Race to the Top money that the State of Illinois received recently, that was a lot of money spent on infrastructure. Ninety-five percent of this grant has to go to community slots in the state. It's a four-year opportunity that they're looking at. The State of Illinois is eligible for $20 million each of the four years. The state has already asked us if we would have capacity to increase the number of slots going forward for the following fiscal year. A lot of that depends on where we're at facility-wise and things like that, and whether we want to, again, convert seats or add additional seats. The requirements for the program are very similar to our preschool-for-all program with a few additions, and one of the few additions is that it has to be a full-day program. Children need to go to school as long as a first grader. We have to up the comprehensive services more similar to what Head Start does versus what our preschool-for-all program does, with enhanced community resources for our families. So we have added in those costs to this. This is a, really no impact to our budget. On the executive summary, I did give you some of the initial numbers once we completed the budget sheets. There is $88,156 considered local RPS funding, and I just want you to know that the way we figured that was what it would cost to rent four classrooms, what the utilities are, the heat, how much of a nurse's salary for four classrooms that would be. It's things that are already budgeted for, but the state did want us to try to identify some in-kind amounts, and so that's where that 86, or $88,000 is coming from. So if you look under the fiscal impact statement, what we've asked for is a little over 1.1 million for these seats. Local funding coming from Circles of Learning is $55,608. Head Start is $345,240. The classrooms at Dennis would be funded primarily through Head Start funding, although the preschool development grant would be paying our teacher's salary and half of the salary for the Head Start staff member in the classroom, because Head Start had to account for what they currently spend, but we are enhancing the program by providing those students with an additional half-day, so we were able to put that money in the preschool development grant. And then the childcare assistance program and preschool-for-all money is $591,000. The reason preschool-for-all money is included in there is when we looked at where we could move preschool-for-all seats, we had to be very careful that we weren't supplanting. We looked at the childcare partnership at Circles of Learning because they run a three- and four-year-old program. So the three-year-olds at the four new Circles of Learning preschool will be paid for out of preschool-for-all, which is our current grant. It is not in an addition to. And then the four-year-olds' funding would be provided by the preschool development grant. But we felt it was more prudent for us to take a fiscal impact off of Fund 10 by converting classrooms rather than adding additional new seats, which we did not have data to support that we needed additional new seats at this time. Any questions?
Mr. Rollins?
So if we get the grant, I mean, best-case scenario, get the grant, what's this timeline then? First off, what's the timeline for finding out if we get the grant?
Well, we would find out by the end of December. One of the questions we had to answer was, would we be able to be up and running for February of 2015? Which, taking a page out of Dr. Jarrett's book, slow is steady and steady is fast. We said no. We're looking at fall of 2015. We would potentially have some startup funds to hire the additional family support resource staff that can help us in the recruitment and identification and beginning to hook up families with services around March. And then the other piece of this grant is it was required to have a curriculum coach for every 10 classrooms. We had asked to bring that curriculum coach on in June so that we could begin training and working with that person over the summer. So those would be the only startup costs in addition to the materials out at Circles of Learning. Part of the preschool development grant would be paying for the new classroom materials, shelving, toys, things like that out there, as well as then the rest of that will come from Circles of Learning as part of their local contribution. So we might have some startup funds FY 15, but new classrooms would open in fall.
Ms. Jackson?
So what are you asking us to approve tonight? I mean, I looked at the draft of the MOU, and they are blank.
They're blanks, and that's because the state... Well, basically, I'm asking you to approve, that's the general MOU contract that the state is sending out on the 29th. They will fill in the blanks. So I, what the state advised me to do is to give you what our anticipated is, which would be eight classrooms, 120 seats. These are the dollar amounts that were on the budget. If we are approved for what we wrote for, that would pretty much stay consistent there. They may tweak a few things. Basically, it's giving approval for us to sign this, for Dr. Jarrett and Mr. Scovano to sign this when we get it on the 29th, because it has to be back by the 1st of October. If it's not back, we can't be included, and we would not be eligible for funds. So unfortunately, because of the state's timeline, you know, we're still sitting here waiting to see what the final thing is. The language of the contract will not change as far as the deliverables, us needing to report out those kinds of things, you know, what's their responsibility and ours. The only thing we're waiting on is what are the actual numbers, which they notified me today we would have on the 29th.
So this is for legal, so we're being asked to sign a draft MOU? And the MOU will come back?
What you're being asked to draft is a memorandum of understanding, which isn't a legally binding agreement, but it's something the State of Illinois wants to move forward with the grant process to make sure that the members participating, the school districts participating, have the full support or the support of their board at this point in time. The actual grant agreement, if it is awarded, and, you know, if the district is successful in their pursuit, that agreement will actually come back to the board. That will be the binding agreement that will obligate both sides of the contract to do it, and that will be the formal contract. For lack of a better word, I mean, the memorandum of understanding is just saying, yeah, if you guys do this and you guys do this, when, you know, we finalize all the numbers and the terms, you're very interested, and after review of the agreement, you want to move forward with this project. It's not a legal, you're not legally binding the district to anything at this point in time.
Yeah, I think it's basically, we're saying we're willing to partner with them, and they need that because our information will be included in the state grant that they're providing to the federal government. What they don't want to have happen is to find out at the end that, oh, well, by the way, we don't want to do it, because they will have already accounted for that. And there, we're going to have to still, you know, ISB is going to be the fiscal agent, so we are going to be provided, it's going to be very interesting, I'm so used to doing everything electronically, paper copies of this grant, because they're not going to be able to upload it as quick as possible. So over the next couple of months, they're going to be asking us to complete a regular grant application through the Illinois State Board of Education, basically taking this information from the federal information we gave and putting it on the Illinois State Board of Ed documents. We should know by December if the State of Illinois received this money.
You said some seats will be conversion and some seats will be new. What is that in numbers?
We're converting 80 seats.
Eighty from half-day to full-day?
Mm-hmm.
And how much, how many new?
So it's really, if you look at our 120, there's 120 four-year-old seats, so there's 40 new four-year-old seats, but we're also moving the preschool-for-all seats to four-year or three-year-old full-day at Circles of Learning. So those seats are already accounted for somewhere, they're just going to move over there. So it's really 40 new. And again, I could have, I could have done all-new, but just fiscal reality, knowing that we need to alleviate funding. We were able to convert local-funded seats to the PDG grant without it being a supplanting issue. So, you know, basically, we decided to do that and convert seats and reduce the impact on Fund 10 if we get this grant.
Okay, and you talked about preschool-for-all monies. What are those?
Those are the Illinois State Board of Ed preschool monies that we currently get. It's the block grant that we currently get. So this grant can only pay for four-year-olds, so as I moved seats around in the conversion, we had the opportunity to open four new classrooms at Circles of Learning, but the preschool development grant would only pay for four-year-olds. So I moved, essentially, I moved the preschool-for-all seats we're currently funding over there to impact, you know, to make up the difference for the three-year-olds that would be attending over there.
So it's really called preschool-for-all? This doesn't align with our preschool-for-all readiness rocks?
No, no, our grant is called preschool-for-all.
So is this grant all or nothing, or some, or how is it?
You know, at this point in time, I don't know the answer to that. A lot of it's going to depend on the applications that the state received and the amount of money that they receive from the federal government. So they're asking for the full $20 million they're eligible for. They've kind of allocated, they're thinking that there's, you know, possibly 2,000 additional seats maybe in Illinois that they're looking at, could be more based on how people are blending and braiding. I'm actually very pleased with the budget application we put together with the cooperation with our two other partners. It was kind of a long and tedious process. We had a technical assistant person from the State of Illinois with us, helping us work everything out so that we made sure we did everything appropriately. She even provided us with some additional pointers, one being, if this gets approved, that the PDG grant would pay for gap childcare for families that may start with childcare subsidy at Circles of Learning and then maybe lose their job and lose their subsidy. Those children would technically have to unenroll, but we included some short-term gap funding in there to pay the subsidy so the children, we wouldn't lose the children. That also can be used for families we identify through our screening process as families very high need at risk where we need full-day programming for the child, and we need to work with the family to either get a job or get back into school themselves while they wait and apply for the childcare subsidy money. So we did put that in, a small amount, and we're hoping that that stays approved. That was actually the suggestion of our technical assistance helper to do that. I think other communities were doing that. We hadn't even thought of it, so she asked us if we'd be willing to, and I said yes, that sounded like a great idea.
Do four-year-olds get transportation?
The four-year-olds, yes. The four-year-olds in this grant are 100% transported. I made sure of that. So that would only be the 80 seats at the two district buildings. Childcare parents are going to need to get their children to and from childcare, and that's the way it's always been, that's the way it is in other communities, and that's what the state recommended. But we have asked for 100% reimbursement on transportation for those 80 seats.
Just for the 80?
It's only for the 80. I can't use this, I have to only use this money for full-day comprehensive programming. So I needed, I needed to enhance my current program or create new seats with it. It's very specific as to what I can and can't use the money for.
So you're saying there are only going to be 80 additional full-time seats? That's it in the district? Is that what you're saying?
Right now?
Yes.
With the, yes, with the possibility of expanding for more. One of the things, when I submitted our initial numbers, was looking at where could we put them, and right now, we're a little building-bound. This is for four years, and the state has already asked if we would be willing to do additional seats moving forward in the next few fiscal years, and I said absolutely, but again, it depends on where we have space to put new program, new classrooms in. So this is a start, and we're hoping that it will continue. This is, Teresa Hawley explained this to us, is it was a down payment by the federal government to help states be able to increase the number of high-quality preschool seats. So she referred to this as a down payment, they're hoping for additional money down the pipeline, and this is the one way that the federal government is going to be able to send money to the states. You know, they have their federal preschool program, which is Head Start. This provides an opportunity for the federal government to help the states out with their state-funded preschool programs by giving additional supports. This is, I look at this as an additional component to our current process. Families could move from high-quality home visiting programs to a three-year-old half-day program through our preschool-for-all or our Head Start partners. They could move into a four-year-old full-day if needed. These seats are for students who are really at risk, extremely at risk, for academic failure. We need to use a lot of the same risk factors that Head Start and our preschool-for-all program currently uses. With the addition, we can look at, because if they've been in programming with three-year-olds, we can look at their academic scores and say, hey, these guys are below basic or basic, and assign a point value to that, so that kids that are really at need, either for academic failure or other bad outcomes, we can provide a full-day wraparound service for them. So this is like an additional component to our current system that really provides a nice pipeline then moving into four-year-old, I mean, five-year-old full-day kindergarten. And that was actually a requirement. There were some Chicago suburb schools that could not apply for this because they did not have full-day kindergarten.
I'm going to let Mrs. McCulloch jump in with a question. She's had a light on for a while.
Sorry.
Oh, that's okay. I actually have four. I'm going to try to be really quick here.
I'm going to try to be really quick here. So are you saying this $591,000 on your childcare assistance preschool-for-all, is that part of the large grant that we get? Whatever, is it $11 million or?
No, it's only $8 million, and it's a percentage of it, and I can tell you. Hang on a second.
So we're part of, part of our dollars that we already have are going to be going to this. So even though you're saying our Fund X reduction is 200 or 364...
Yes. The preschool-for-all money is paying, really is just supporting the three-year-old seats that we currently fund. I've just moved them to Circles of Learning. Does that make sense?
Yeah, and you know, I would like to see our students in our district, so I'm going to ask these questions then. The $364,000 saving that you're saying by saving for FTEs, we typically use about $65,000 times four, that only is 260. Where's the other 100,000?
There was two paraprofessional positions I was able to convert as well, and I used, based off of the finance, my finance person I work with, we decided what that average teacher's salary was. So basically, I just looked at the average teacher's salary and multiplied it by that, plus there was two paraprofessional positions.
Right, but two pairs together won't make, they would love to be making $50,000 each, but I know that they're not.
That was, that was just the number, and I can double-check that figure, but it was just the number that I had used in the preschool grant application as an average teacher's salary with benefits.
Okay. I would think finance would give you the same number they give us as our average. That's all.
Yeah, so I used whatever.
Okay, I'm trying to go fast here. So we're, we're having 80 seats converted, so we're not adding any seats to our district. We're having 40 new seats at Circles of Learning, and 40 of the other seats at Circles of Learning are being converted using our preschool dollars. So really, we have 80 seats at Circles of Learning and 80 seats in our district.
One of the requirements of this grant was that we access childcare assistant programming money, and the only way to do that is to partner with a daycare.
And so that lends to the next question. If we have full-day service school for these students, part of the reason that they go to Circles of Learning is because they get additional daycare time.
And they get before and after-school care.
And that was my question. Is there before and after-school care a part of this, or are we going to be paying for that?
No, we're not paying for that. That, that's why we're partnering with a childcare facility, because they pay for the before and after-school care.
Right, but at Dennis and Somerdale, who's paying for it?
Somerdale is not. Somerdale and Dennis are just the full-day first-grade hours.
Okay, well, and I understood you to say that was one of the big deals on this whole thing, is that they need whole-day care and not, but whole-day school and whole-day care is different.
Yep, well, one of the options that another community looked at, and I'm aware of it because I work with this director, is they wanted to still continue to do their half-day programming and then contract, like, with the Y, to do the other half-day, and the state of Illinois said no. And the reason was, they did not want children to change providers. They didn't want, best practice says that they would be with the same provider the whole time period. So they were ineligible to continue to apply because they did not have the facilities to continue to do a full-day option. They wanted to bus them to another provider, and the state of Illinois said for the, what they're looking at in their revision, absolutely not. So the Somerdale and Dennis will be a full-day first-grade hours programming. Should we need to look at before and after-school, I don't know if we can look, once we get to our four centers, if we can look at other opportunities to partner with additional programs, or maybe look at additional funding as it comes, comes out with this.
So if we add additional seats next year, will there be additional money to pay for those seats? When you said they asked us to increase that?
Yes. Yeah, because one of the things the state of Illinois has to also do is commit to matching some of this, so whether that match comes in the preschool-for-all block grant or other things.
Good to know. And you guys have done an incredible job lifting all this in a short period of time, and I'd like to commend you for that.
Thank you.
But I know my board members would be happy that I be done with this, so let me ask my last question, and that is, we have the Head Start program in the same building, but real, and, you know, we're trying to work collaboratively, but realistically, we have two administrations. We hear that our Head Start students have to be on a different bus than our students, that we can't commingle some of those resources because that is federal money. So I'm just really wondering how that'll work when now you add a third pot of money.
Yeah. Well, with this, one of the things that we did look at, Head Start transports the students that live within their identified zone for what used to be Henrietta. So they provide the transportation to the kids at Dennis for that. One of the things I worked with our state technical assistance person on was to look at, how could we take those 40 seats and be able to provide transportation through the preschool development grant to other students that qualify for Head Start that do not live within that, so that they would come on our buses, basically. And so we're able to do that, because the truth of the matter is, there's children at Orton Keys and Fairgrounds that also need perhaps a full-day option, and to limit Head Start to only what they could transport is not a good idea. There's also been conversation, it has not been resolved, as to whether we would transport all the kids and Head Start would pay us for their portion of the transportation, or whether Head Start would continue to transport. It depends on what's most cost-effective for them. But when I put the budget in, I made sure that if they decided that we would transport, that it was our transportation costs I used to identify the amount. So it hasn't been worked out yet. We'll get there.
Well, the coordinator then...
I have one last question. And this, for the preschool at Montessori, is that paid out of Fund X as well? What fund is that on?
That's not my program per se. I'm assuming that's a Fund X.
What fund is that? That's Fund X?
Mm-hmm.
And that's for three- and four-year-olds, correct?
Four-year-olds, I believe, only.
It's just four-year-olds?
Mm-hmm.
Thanks. Well, the coordinator then called the role on the approval of the memorandum of understanding with the state of Illinois for the federal preschool development grant.
Mr. Connor?
Yes.
Mrs. Powers?
Yes.
Ms. Jackson?
Yes.
Mr. Rollins?
Yes.
Mr. Scovano?
Yes.
Mrs. McCulloch?
Yes.
Dr. Harner?
Yes.
The motion passes unanimously.
Are there any additional new business items or agenda recommendations for our meeting tonight? If not...
No, but special board meeting is next Tuesday.
We have a special board meeting next Tuesday.
Close session starts at 5:00.
Close session starts at 5:00.
And then we come downstairs at 6:15.
I would like to have open start at 6:15.
Okay.
Okay. And our one agenda item will be, in open, the discussion about committee structure for the board. So bring your questions. Okay, I'll now take a motion to adjourn.
Yes, motion to adjourn.
All those in favor say aye. Close, same sign. We adjourned at 8:30, whatever that says, 3:00. Okay, I guessed 8:30. I guessed 8:30.